...the mandatory 2% municipal caps. Despite the fact that Highland Park First Aid Squad is a totally separate organization, not part of the municipal government, we have been funding their organization in various ways. In 2017, we were able to help support the HP First Aid Squad with a budget of $31,000, up about $5,000 from 2016 and prior years. Additionally, and continuing on, the municipality pays for insurance coverage for the squad's trucks, an additional $10,000 to $15,000, as well as, and I needed to get this verified, are we fueling their cars, their trucks as well?
I did not verify.
Okay, so we don't know that, but...
The answer is yes.
Oh, oh, thank you, David. Lastly, the municipality also owns the property that the First Aid Squad's building is on, but we have donated the usage of that land to the First Aid Squad for their facility. Times are much more fiscally difficult for all municipalities in New Jersey. We can no longer afford to support the HP First Aid Squad as we had in the past. Lastly, more and more local First Aid Squads have assisted their municipalities by offering to charge residents' insurance policies for ambulance rides. Surrounding towns like New Brunswick, Piscataway, Edison, Emmett Tuchan already have this policy in place. Here in Highland Park, we would not require anyone who could not afford to pay the co-pay for the cost of a ride, or who did not have insurance, for the ride that they need to the hospital. So these are some of the things that have changed this year. The response time alone was enough to concern us for the governing body to need to take a hard look at our public safety policy. And at this time, Councilwoman Foster Dublin, can you add to this before we call up the Robert Wood Johnson folks?
I think I should just say that I too have, well, when I was sick, my son called the First Aid Squad, and they were promptly at my door to help a number of years ago, and I greatly appreciate the squad being here and the services they offer us as a town. But as the mayor said, and as we've been looking at the response time and what has been going on in our community, and just the change in people volunteering, the levels of volunteerism, we had some concerns, we looked into it, but we're really looking into the public safety overall, the response time that is provided to our residents, and to ensure that the safety of all our residents is paramount. There were some incidents, which I'm not going to get into right now, however, I did reach out to the hospitals, which was JFK Hospital, and had conversation with them, we had some meetings with them, and we looked into Robert Wood Johnson, which we had meetings with them, and we have Don Roberts tonight, that he will come and share with us some of the service that they can provide, and their response time to Highland Park, and questions about fees and services, they'll provide that as well. But when we looked at the other hospitals, and knowing that Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas Health is a trauma unit for the state, and that they're a state, they're the number one trauma unit for our area, and they come in, what they currently provide for us is advanced care. So if somebody, say, for example, is having a heart attack, they would come in to deal with that. Our basic life support is dealt with by our First Aid Squad, but anything that says "advanced care," Robert Wood Johnson is called in, and they're the ones who take over from there.
Excuse me, Elsie, has this been going on already?
Oh, this has always been going on, they've always come in to provide advanced care. So in conjunction with our First Aid Squad, Robert Wood Johnson comes in and provides advanced care to us. And they have been coming in, as the mayor said, since this year, providing basic support for us, and they are our mutual aid partner. But with that said, I would like for you to hear from Robert Wood Johnson, and we will have some questions, and on the 18th, we'll have an opportunity to be back here for questions to be, that you may have questions that I'm quite sure that you want to ask Robert Wood Johnson as well. Don, would you like to come up?
Can I say something? No, I can't do that. This is a formal council meeting, and there will be time for public questions a little bit later, there's two periods.
The council can formulate their questions in advance, and if it's nobody gets to ask a question tonight?
No, that's not what I said. I just said, no, we have two open discussion times.
But not tonight.
Oh, well, you have, tonight you can ask us questions. These guys have to leave after their presentation, but on Monday night?
Monday night, 7:00 PM.
They'll be back for any questions you may have. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Don Roberts, I'm the Director for Robert Wood Johnson's Mobile Health Service. This is Todd Sheridan, my Director of Operations. Thank you, Mayor, Council. As they were saying, we've been a longtime partner with Highland Park, as we've been providing advanced life support since 1982. We've enjoyed a very good and long working relationship, and have done amazing jobs in providing care to the residents of Highland Park and all of Middlesex and Somerset County. Since that time, we've grown significantly. Can everyone hear me? Okay, great, I want to make sure I'm speaking loud enough. Thank you, I'll try to speak up a little louder, and face you a little more often. Since 1982, we've grown significantly. Currently, we cover more than 750 square miles, providing advanced life support and basic life support, as well as specialty care transport, and we do inter-facility transfers to help with the hospital, to move patients out. Currently, we serve 12 communities, 12 townships, I should say, for basic life support, and in, like I said, Somerset and Middlesex County, we're providing advanced life support.
Can you bring up just those couple of notes there for me? We had had that PowerPoint, but we understood that that wasn't available to put up.
All right. We'll make sure it's available on Monday.
So, thank you. Recently, we've been involved with the New Jersey State EMS Task Force, and we've been assisting the U.S. Virgin Islands with three different deployments, where we've sent out both the advanced life support and basic life support EMS services over there to assist in taking care of patients and helping them build their infrastructure over there. So from a clinical perspective, we started in 2014, being recognized as the outstanding EMS service for the state of New Jersey. We got that recognition based off of our PIT crew CPR. It's a process that we put together to ensure high-quality CPR, working not only with our crews, but working with all the EMS agencies, where everybody actually has a position and a place to provide care for patients. So we all understand exactly what our roles are, our responsibilities are, and how to positively affect outcomes in patient care. As was stated earlier, we are part of the Level One Trauma Center that serves this area. We are also a comprehensive stroke center. As part of that, we get amazing opportunities for learning in an environment that we not necessarily would see being tied to other hospitals. That information and education is also shared with our staff in quarterly educations. Our paramedics and our EMTs are all trained to the exact same level. The only time that the level of education changes is when the paramedics have to go out and demonstrate their competencies with their skill sets. The EMTs and the paramedics' level and abilities to assess patients have not changed, they work collaboratively, and this allows us to provide, again, high-quality care, and also work with the squads to do the exact same thing. Another initiative that we have recently been working on is partnering with all the EMS agencies throughout the areas that we serve to offer the same education that we have for our staff. We also are offering the opportunity to provide BLS medical direction. And what that does for the squads, such as volunteer agencies, is it allows them to receive the education necessary to advance their scope of practice. Through the education and being tied to a medical director, you're now able to administer Narcan for overdoses, EpiPen for patients who are having allergic reactions, and CPAP for people that are having severe respiratory distress. We work to provide that education to everybody, there's many, many different avenues by which that can happen. So from a safety perspective, some of the things that we do in our service that we provide, we have a product in our vehicles called Road Safety. Road Safety is a product that, for our staff, to ensure that we are providing the safest possible transportation to the scene and also to the hospital. The Road Safety system is an inertia-driven product, so it gives instant feedback to the driver. So if they're braking too fast, it lets them know. If they're driving too fast, because we have parameters for speed, it lets them know. If they're taking turns too fast, it lets them know. One of the things that you see a lot of times is backing up accidents are probably one of the highest things that we see. We also have that built into the system that makes the passenger have to get out, press the button, and become a spotter as they back up as part of the Road Safety system. We also have CO2 monitors on all of our vehicles for when we find ourselves in situations, and a lot of times you see that more in the wintertime, where you may walk into a building, and people are having difficulty breathing, maybe unconscious, and we're not knowing that we're walking into a dangerous environment. Our CO2 monitors will alert us of that, and allow us time to get the patient and our crews out safely. So a couple of interesting pieces of equipment that we also have on our vehicles are Manger lifting devices.
You have to hold it close here.
Thank you, sorry. One of the products that we have on our vehicles is called a Manger lifting device. This is a really unique piece of equipment. What it does for us is ensure safe movement of our patients. It's a mat, it actually slides underneath of our patients, and with the press of a button, it brings the patient into a seated position in about two minutes' time. This device can lift up to 750 pounds, not only making it safe for the patient, but also making it safe for our crews. Picture that moment when somebody that is on the floor and can't get up, that person that's riddled with arthritis, it doesn't matter how you actually try to help them or move them, it's causing pain. This mat is really nice, you just slide it underneath them, press the buttons, brings them up into a seated position, we can either help slide them over onto the stretcher, or help stand them up. It's absolutely a wonderful product, it maintains the dignity of our patients, and, again, assists them with minimal effort. One of the other products that we have, it's been in use for quite some time, is our Lucas CPR devices. We all know through American Heart Association that continuous CPR is what affects outcome, along with early intervention of CPR and AED. This product will allow us to move our patients safely with continuous CPR, it's a battery-operated device that we put on, it provides continuous CPR, it also helps with outcomes in cardiac So at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Todd Sheridan to speak to you a little bit more from the operational perspective.
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me okay? All right, thank you all very much for having me this evening. So from a response perspective, when we look at from the BLS-specific, from the BLS-specific response, we operate in a 911 capacity in both the New Brunswick, or surrounding areas of New Brunswick, Franklin, Piscataway areas. Those are the closest ones, we also operate all the way through Somerset County and down to Mercer County. In certain areas and with our operation, we do partner with local volunteer squads in the response plan, and we help operate as needed. In that operation, we can respond, and we do, from a 911 perspective, from as close to New Brunswick, here to this town, utilizing technology to our advantage. Not only do we respond with our BLS amulets in a timely manner, but we also have technology that helps us in outside products that will help predict call volume, call location, also do automatic compliance reporting to contracts. So in, let's say, a contract, a said response time is required, we measure ourselves to that in real time, and we report out monthly. From an operations perspective, we have not only our 911 amulets that are around, that work for contract, we also have the ability to flex our staff that operate within the non-emergency response. Those non-emergency resources who operate out of, are here locally near the New Brunswick Hospital can be reallocated if the 911 volumes predict it, giving excess resource, which in a mutual aid capacity now, we've been able to help other agencies that are local. Furthermore, if you look at it from the reporting structure and the ability, we have a very large dispatch, Saydart Dispatch Center. This dispatch center can hold up to 18 seats, and we're only operating nine of them at this point. They utilize technology in partnering with different towns, and having data and/or 911 calls transferred directly for dispatch. In that dispatching, they also monitor our resource locations through an IT infrastructure, and make sure that if we dispatch, we are able to backfill in a timely manner. The other part about, from a dispatching perspective, the state has started to require a lot of reporting from dispatch centers on EMS volumes. That EMS data report is very large and very tedious. Fortunately enough for us, we dispatch or process about 100,000 calls a year through the dispatch center, and that report is automated, in which that we are able to in turn transfer to the state when required. Yes, there was an ask earlier about billing. We have been operating here again since 1982. When we respond, we have had an ALS bill if so need be.
Could you explain what ALS bill is and a BLS?
Correct. ALS is part of the certificate of need process, and the ALS bill, it would be, would be just associated if an ALS unit responded. A BLS unit, if it would respond, there is a bill that's associated with this. Now, we do charge $809 plus mileage. That being said, there is a concern always about folks that have challenges paying the bill. One of the things that we do is we partner with a third service billing company. That third service billing company operates for us, and in what they do with their processes, they have what's called a hardship waiver. People discuss all the time what happens to somebody that has a challenged billing. Our process that we've been using the entire time is if a patient has a challenge, and they notify us, they've received a bill, and we have a challenge, we will work with them. We have a one-page document that all you have to do is fill out and process back, and then we are able to waive the bill at that point, and/or work with you on payment schedules. So we are able to do either one. So we are able to partner with you and help everyone as need be in the community. Last but not least is the partnership that we like within the town. Not only from a 911 response, or a mass casualty response, or a need be from an EMS task force, we have the ability as an agency, through our education department and Level One Trauma Center, to be able to offer classes, to help volunteerism, to help provide the training, offer BLS medical direction, to be able to assist. In those offerings, we also, we also look at, we have our tactical EMS support. Recently, however, we talked about partnering with different agencies within the town. I think it was April of this year, that was just career day at Highland Park High School, where we brought some of our folks over there, and they were there at that, they were there at that time. So we like to, we like to be part of the communities, we like to be part of the parades, we like to be within the communities that we serve to help. Last but not least, we also love understanding what the customer wants. We do customer service surveys on a portion of our calls by contract, and in those customer service surveys that we do, we ask, what was some of the most important pieces to your response, and what did you care most about of the response? Wish I had the slide up, but over 80% of the patients talked about the care that they received, and the compassion they were given. We like to, we like to be able to give that feedback, or hear that feedback, and like to be able to give that service as part of Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas Health. So Donna, I'll turn this back over to you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Don. Go ahead. I think I... This time, I would like to, I have a few questions, and I'm going to open up to my council members, to see, fellow council members, to see if they have questions as well. One of the questions that we had posed to us, it says, "Will there be a choice of hospitals in non-threatening life conditions? For example, if the person has a physician at St. Peters, and that's where they normally go, would they have a choice to be taken there?"
Absolutely. Both in non-life-threatening and life-threatening situations, we always take into consideration the patient and their needs, as well as their choices. If you're having a life-threatening event, and you want to go to St. Peters or somewhere else, we'll take you to where you want to go. If it's so urgent that the patient needs to be stabilized, we're going to recommend that we go to the closest facility to get you stabilized, and then we'll transport you later to where you want to go. But any other situation, in a non-life-threatening situation, we'll be glad to transport you to the hospital of your choice.
Another big question is that Albany Street Bridge sees a lot of traffic, especially at rush hour, the mornings, afternoon. How would you be able to get to town should there be an emergency situation? How would you navigate that?
Well, I think our experience since 1982 speaks for itself. We have been navigating this under many different adverse conditions, not only traffic, but weather conditions, as well as, you know, ordinary times of day, whether it's midnight or 5:00 PM. We have found ourselves in these positions. If there's such an event that would cause the bridge to be closed for a lengthy period of time, you know, we would reroute our trucks, and we would restation our trucks in positions that will allow us to provide care in that timely manner, as you stated before, in that, within that 10 minute and 59 second timeframe. Just looking at our data here recently, excuse me, just looking at our data here recently, I believe it's since January, we've assisted the squad in mutual aid 100 times, and without actually working any of the compliance, we've been, we've been 87% of the time compliant to the 1059 standard. Once we lock into a contract or an agreement with you, that will be maintained at the 90th percentile or higher.
What about if there was a fire, and there's fire calls, would you guys respond to that as well?
Absolutely, we respond to all requests for service, whether it's a fire, a standby. We, you know, in a large-scale event, such as a true working fire, where, whether it's an apartment complex, or a nursing home, such as that, not only will we have our ambulances out there, but we will also reach out to our EMS task force partners. We are a task force host agency for the central part of New Jersey, and we also house resources in the way of a, what looks like a fire truck-sized vehicle that stocked with supplies and equipment necessary to manage large-scale events, such as what I described. We would also enact that and bring out enough resources to support the need.
Lastly, for me, we have seen a number of emotionally disturbed persons in our town lately, with state laws that have changed, that, you know, they're in group homes more so than in institutions, and I know there has been a lot of calls that goes out for emotionally disturbed persons. How would that billing process work if someone called, and, you know, in that situation, would their billing be treated any differently for basic service?
Okay, so from a billing perspective, there, I got it now? All right. So from a billing perspective, we have to abide by the laws that govern between Medicare and Medicaid, so if we have to process those claims, we would. Now, what we do not do is, from a billing perspective, go back and balance bills. So if you have somebody that, from a Medicare or Medicaid perspective, they, there's no overbilling, there's no going back to receive the rest, trying to claim any part of the rest of the bill. Furthermore, we still have the hardship waivers that we still work with as an agency. If something else comes up, we certainly, Don Roberts is the first point of contact here for the township leadership, in case something or a question of a bill were to come up.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to anyone else.
Susie, do you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple of questions, probably around billing, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
So first off, I was able to see some of the data that we had on this, and it looks like right now, Robert Wood Johnson is currently covering about 10 to 20% of our daytime calls, anywhere from, you know, four to nine calls, say, a month, something like that, but it turns out to be about, at least for the past six months, it looks like. Have you had recurring complaints about billings? Because you're already doing this right now, right, for us? Do you have, are there some things that people need to look out for? Let me just ask a couple of things, if you don't mind. Also, can any paramed services be denied if someone can't pay? And can you talk about which carriers are in-network for Robert Wood Johnson?
Okay, I'll speak to a couple of those, and then I'll actually pass it off to Todd to speak to a couple of those. First and foremost, no service is ever denied based on ability to pay. As a matter of fact, the patients first, we come in, we take care of the patients, we manage the care of the patient, we transport the patient to the hospital. It is not until after care has been turned over to the emergency department for continued care, do we actually start any of our paperwork and/or look for insurance information.
And it's also state and federal regulations, right? Is that correct? That emergency care services?
Right, there is, yes, there are federal regulations that govern the care, you know, everybody's entitled to care, and will always receive care without being asked for insurance information prior to any care being administered.
And can you talk about what networks, what carriers you have that are in-network?
Sure.
If you know some of that now, or...
So, good question. A couple of things with billing. Billing and providers in and out of network have kind of been changing over the past landscape with, as it relates to, let's just call it healthcare. I know that Horizon and Etnam have both been, have both been working and/or confirmed contract, or contracted and in-network providers. The other thing that I want to just remind everyone, from a billing's perspective, from an EMS agency, you only, there's only called a BLS basic bill that you can provide. From an ALS standpoint, there's an ALS 1 bill and 2 bill, but the, basically from a Medicare standpoint, from a Medicaid standpoint, the government controls that through a Medicare fee schedule. So when you talk about what you can and can't pay from an in-network provider, and/or what's federally controlled, I just wanted to bring that point up, that a lot of this is dictated by either the insurance companies and/or by the federal government.
And does anybody else have a question?
Just one more quick one, though. So can you, I don't know if you can clarify this, ambulance services, my memory is that usually that's a separate category under the benefits, with maybe like a $100 deductible or something like that, it doesn't necessarily go to your larger deductible. Can you comment on that or confirm anything?
I'm going to just summarize with what best I understand it, from what I believe you're asking. Yes, when you look at, you had the regular amounts that... Yes, when you look at, you had the regular amounts that, let's use Medicare, for instance.
Can you speak closer?
Sorry, I'm gonna get it before the end. So from Medicare, they have the Medicare allowable, which is the eighty, the eighty percent that is covered. And then you have the, the rest of the deductible, which is the twenty percent that is, that is with the provider or with, with the patient. And that, that's a Medicare fee schedule. And most insurances follow somewhat of that, of having a certain amount that they cover and then or a certain amount of co-pay that's associated with that. I believe, did, did I answer your question?
I guess I just thought there was more of an ambulance co-pay that was separate from, you know, co-insurance, so, but it might vary per policy, so.
It may, and, and I apologize for not being able to follow you on that.
So I just want to clarify one thing. What the municipality is looking at now is, is that the first aid, Highland Park First Aid Squad would stay on as the number-one call from eight PM till six AM and that you would be available from six AM till eight PM. Am I correct?
That is correct. And furthermore, with that, I'd like to just, just extend that if, if there's a time that a, that a volunteer agency is able to and/or is able to staff during that time period, just let us know. They can be, they, they have more, we're more than willing to partner with, have them first come and respond to the community. We want to be good stewards and partners. We do this in, in, in other different municipalities to where the, if, if there's a volunteer agency that is available, they are first out and then we will be able to respond as backup as need be.
All right, thank you. Thank you both for coming in tonight.
I think council member, Kim.
Oh, I didn't see.
Can you just talk a little bit about the hardship waiver? Is that a certain restricted-to-income level? Does someone need, they receive the bill, they say, yes, I can't pay this? Is there documentation that they need to provide in order to qualify for that?
So there is no limit to your income to be able to qualify for that. There are a few questions that we ask about the amount of outlay that you have opposed to the income that you have, you know, and of course, any extenuating circumstances that go along with the inability to pay. First and foremost, like I've, has been reiterated here before, is our job is to provide care to anybody who needs it. And secondly, is to work with anybody who has a, a difficulty or a challenge in paying that bill. It could be a, a momentary thing, you know? In most circumstances, you can certainly afford to, to pay a bill, but, you know, you've got injured as a result of your house burning down and you've got a lot of other issues that, that will tie up your money. You know, that's extenuating circumstances. We'll work with you.
Okay, thank you.
One brief coordination question. With regard, this is sort of like the hardship, but really involves more what you said before about you're having your choice of one of the local hospitals if you have a preference. For instance, my cardiologist is at JFK, but if I fell off the roof and broke a leg, I might go to Robert Wood Johnson. When you're talking about the hardship and working out a payment plan or a waiver regardless of income, suppose we did go to Robert Wood Johnson for treatment and we were there for a week and the hardship would apply there. Would it all work together in, in working out those services? Or do you stand alone from the services of the hospital? Are the billing services coordinated?
So, so, so from a EMS perspective, the billing services is separate from the hospital. So we utilize a third service provider for that. Now, if, there, there's many a times that, to answer you directly, there's been patient experience where patient experience knows that somebody, because they've gone around through case management and/or social work, that may be working with the, the person that's injured or ill, they may know ahead of time something is going on and we can start the process ahead of time. And that's where that partnership occurs. Working with the case manager and social work at the hospital, we're fortunate enough to be able to work with them all the time and they're a phenomenal group of folks. So if, and I, and we, we get the calls from patient experience that says, hey, look, we have this patient or this situation is occurring, we need to make you aware of. We get that and we certainly will work with, but they are two distinct separate bills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So for the third time, I'm going to thank you for coming in tonight and, and again for joining with us on Monday so that residents can actually ask you directly some questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate the opportunity. Have a good evening.
Okay, we're gonna get to business because I know there are people who want to speak, so let, let me move as quickly as I can. And council members, if you can keep your reports, if you have to give a report to a minimum, I would appreciate it and I'm sure everybody in the audience would it as well. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meeting held February sixth, 2018, February twentieth, 2018, and March sixth, 2018 as distributed?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call? Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before the start of the, our regular council reports, I'm going to ask Councilman Hirsch and Councilwoman Foster Dublin to report on their progress regarding any discussions about inherent racial bias. So Matt, if you could start us off?
Thank you, Mayor. We have asked the, we, upon request, the American Conference on Diversity has resubmitted a proposal to provide diversity and inclusion consultation services to the borough of Highland Park to assist the borough in issuing an RFP for anti-bias training for our police and other municipal agencies. Initially, it was a general consultation that was going to be, just help us identify some of the areas that we wanted to focus on, but this is more, more specifically intended to, to, to assemble an RFP, a request for proposals for firms that will help, that the borough will budget for in 2019 to address, to, to address some of these, some of these ongoing concerns and issues. The American Conference on Diversity will work closely with, sure. The American Conference on Diversity, I'm trying to keep it fast because it's gonna be a long meeting. Will work closely with key leadership and stakeholders to explore a cohesive plan for setting the diversity and inclusion agenda for the entire borough. The process will explore the dynamics of current climate, of the current climate and how it shapes institutional policies and practices and cultural norms. Ultimately, the borough will map out the diversity inclusion priorities and begin to identify practices that will enhance and sustain our desire to lead with dignity and respect for all. The program goal is to provide, the, 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 the American Conference on Diversity's proposal indicates that it will provide professional diversity inclusion strategic planning consultation to the Highland Park Borough and to create a roadmap focused on the specific needs to develop a comprehensive anti-bias training program and/or initiative for our law enforcement agencies as well as other municipal agencies. We will discuss their, the, the American Conference on Diversity's proposal in our council conference session at our July tenth meeting at six PM. Elsie?
Okay, we, there was a request that, for us to look at the data that has been collected by our police department and to analyze that data. To that end, I, we've reached out to a group of consultants and we came up with one person in particular, his name is Delacy Davis, and it's Delacy Davis Consulting Services. And he was a twenty-year police officer, veterans officer of the East Orange Police Force. He founded Black Cops Against Brutality, that he founded in nineteen ninety-one while he was still an officer working within the system because he saw various occasions where acts of violence were perpetrated on persons that were incarcerated. So he wanted us to do something about that, so he went out and while he was in the system, he worked hard to try to address some of the issues. He's currently at John J. Fisher College where he's working on his doctoral program and he has a group of other officers such as, such as himself, a former FBI agent, Tyrone Powers, then a former chief of police from Trenton, New Jersey, that, and a doctor, ew, her name escapes me right now. And she, she studies and teaches police brutality cases, she works on that. And she works on anti-bias inherent bias cases. And that team will be coming together to take a look at the data that we had asked them to take a look at that was collected by our department. And they will be providing us a report, I would say, within the next ninety days, once we've given them okay to move forward. So we're looking forward to working with them. Delacy is the executive officer of family support in Union County. Some of the things that he's done away from just Black Cops Against Police Brutality, he created a crisis plan, he dealt with Under Your Wings, a delegation that went to Pope John Paul to release an American juvenile that was sentenced to death in Europe and he was released. He also worked on someone that is, it was very close to my heart when I heard of this situation and his name was Lionel Tate. Lionel Tate was a twelve-year-old boy that was in a wrestling match with his six-year-old playmate and the, he slammed the child on the ground, the child died. And he was sentenced at twelve years old to life imprisonment without the possibility of parole. And Delacy was very instrumental into getting that sentence overturned along with Johnny Cochrane to make that all happen. And he will be offering his service to us here in Highland Park and that will be at no cost. He'll be providing his in-kind service to us and his list of resume go on and on in the body of work that he has done. And we're looking forward to have him to take a look at the data and to analyze and to come back with us with what he finds. And as he said over and over again, the, him and his team will be taking a, an unbiased look at the bi, at, at the findings, they'll be scrubbing the data, they'll look at it carefully and they'll come back and give us a report. And it, as he says, it is what it is. Whatever the report says, that's what he's gonna provide for us and he wants to present it to the council. Unfortunately, he had another meeting tonight because I wanted him was to come and to talk a little about himself and the services that they offer, but he could not be here. But on our next meeting, before we do a resolution, a formal resolution, I've asked him to come back and to do a presentation. And that's where we are.
Thank you. Okay, council reports. I'm gonna start all the way down on my right with Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
I do have few brief announcements. I know the mayor threatened us before here, so that's okay.
It's true.
The, our newly formed and reintroduced, formerly the Historic Society, now the Historic Commission, had a great two-day walking tour. I know some of the residents, we received some emails that they weren't able to sign up because the tour was full. That's actually because we had, we had to do separate groups and the first, on the first day, and it was about sixty people in total. So it was hard for our tour guide and also the volunteer for you to actually hear him. So we're putting together a self-guided tour that you can pick up at your own leisure and learn about our downtown. Also, one other quick announcement because we're not gonna meet again. The Fourth of July fireworks in the park will take place Monday, July second, and the rain date is July third. And festivities begin at five PM. I look forward to seeing you all there. And last but not least, because I did promise them I would announce it at this meeting, Saturday I attended the FCD Chinese School graduation, which many Highland Parkers are students that graduated. And I would just like to publicly congratulate them on, on finishing the school and it's very hard to get up as a high school student and go to Saturday school at eight AM in the morning. So congratulations to our Highland Park residents. And that is it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. In fact, last week's e-news, our e, electronic newsletter, has my write-up on the Economic Development Committee's updates, so I encourage everybody to read it. And there's a lot of links to, to various things that Main Street is up to. And by the way, you will not be bored from now through December. There's something going on every weekend, music on the corner every Friday, festivals, so please take a look at that and, and you can look at the links as well. There's also a survey from our Safe Walking and Psyching Committee. And thanks to Rebecca Hirsch, the director of Main Street, for presenting to us. We'll try to make sure she comes back once a quarter. And last week, we hosted Brett Bramble and John Azaloni, who are walking the East Coast Greenway for opioid addiction awareness. Brett and John began their walk at the end of January in Key West, Florida. They will walk the length of the East Coast Greenway to Maine to bring awareness to opioid addiction, a nationwide crisis that is devastating families and communities. Mayor Galbrill Mittler and I sat with Brett and John at breakfast to discuss their experiences and the important work that they're doing. Thanks to Pastor Seth Caprada who allowed them to stay overnight at the church. Please visit Brett, excuse me, please visit BrettBrambleWalks.com for more information. We'll have that on our website or maybe in an e-news article as well. We wish them best on their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to point to, tonight, we are considering a Resolution six eighteen one five eight, which supports the designation of Streptomyces grissias as the official state microbe and specifically a bill in the legislature that designates this microbe as the official state microbe. Now, before you chuckle, because this is an academic community. This was a request from Bartle, from, from a third-grade class at Bartle that is, you know, that, that is participating in basically a civic exercise. Specifically, a parent in that class is a microbiologist at Rutgers University and this specific microbe, Streptomyces grissias, and its support as the state microbe of New Jersey, this, this microbe was discovered in the soil at Rutgers University and was found to produce a very important antibiotic, streptomycin, that has saved millions of lives throughout the world. The discovery led to a Nobel Prize for a Rutgers professor named Selman Waxman and the discovery also led to the start of many pharmaceutical companies in New Jersey. Many of these companies still, still employ our residents and neighbors and are very important to our state's economy. Because of the importance of this microbe and our shared history and to our state's economy, we are, we are casting our, our nod of support for legislation in the, currently in the legislature, bills, Senate Bill S seventeen twenty-nine and its Assembly Companion three six five zero to designate Streptomyces grissias as the state microbe of New Jersey. And I just wanted to point out the letter that Councilwoman Markowitz and I both received as, as parents of third graders. This is a letter that was sent to us that is signed by, by constituents in the class, young, young constituents in the class. And it's also just an example of, I think, what it, what participating in the civic process can, can achieve, as you all have tonight. And it's great to see a full room, but I really hope you come back. Just a couple of other things. Sorry, Mayor. I am thrilled to announce that after an eight-month trial period, the Highland Park Municipal ID is now being administered at its intended home, the Highland Park Public Library, located right up the road at thirty-one North Fifth Avenue. Applicants can receive the card Mondays between two PM and four-thirty PM and then again between seven PM and eight PM. And then again on Thursdays between ten AM and one PM. Remember, the card is available to all residents age fourteen and up and is accepted and is an accepted form of photo identification for access to all municipal agencies and can be used as one's primary library card if they so choose. It's also accepted by two of our local banks, Unity and Providence Bank, as a secondary form of identification when opening a checking account. The cost is, oh, and the, and the card can also be used as your library card if you so choose. You can also opt for, for, for the standard library card that you get. The cost is fifteen dollars per card for adults, seven dollars for seniors, veterans, and children. A fee waiver will be granted to any resident who claims financial hardship with no questions asked. Applicants must provide, provide proof of identity and proof of Highland Park residency based on a a point system, which can be found at www.hpborough.com/municipalidprogram. On June 1st, the Borough of Highland Park, the Highland Park Human Relations Commission and the Pride Center of New Jersey cosponsored the raising of the LGBT pride flag right outside, here in front of the Senior Youth Center, in observance of June being Pride Month. The observance is symbolic, yes, but I think we find, we find this particularly powerful. After decades of advocacy, the political climate has changed so rapidly for the LGBT community for the better, but there are still challenges. Discrimination continues to run rampant, particularly for aging community members who are trying to get into age-restricted or subsidized housing. And just last week, we saw the owner of a cake shop in Colorado prevail when the Supreme Court of the United States sided with him and ruled that the Colorado Civil Rights Commission, which originally ruled against the baker, had been shown to be hostile to religion because of the remarks of one of its members. While the court strongly reaffirmed protections for gay rights, these types of suits are thinly veiled attempts to discriminate. They know it, we know it, and we need to continue the fight for what's right, the fight for equity. There's a reason why our inclusive communities resolution, intended to protect our most vulnerable members of our immigrant population, starts off intentionally broad. It's because no matter where we are in history, hostile courts, administrations, and leaders will do what it takes to marginalize given populations. History proves that, and so we wear the pin and raise the flag to show where our hearts are, and then we create the policies for a truly inclusive community. Just one other, one other thing, Mayor. This Thursday, June 14th, at 7:00 PM, please join the Human Relations Commission for a discussion with author Crystal Setal of Secrets We Kept: Three Women of Trinidad. The event will take place at the Highland Park Senior Youth Center, 220 South Sixth Avenue. But make sure you read the book, which is her account of the long-held secrets of the author's family's past, and what it took for her foremothers to survive and find strength in themselves amid violence, rigid ethnic and racial caste system, and a tolerance of domestic abuse. The harsh legacies of plantation slavery permeate the history of Trinidad. Thank you to the Human Relations Commission and Commissioner Julie Luck for putting this together. And we have received a few complaints from tenants concerned about housing discrimination. And I just wanted to note that through a HUD grant, New Jersey Citizen Action, which is located right here in town, is providing fair housing tests to anybody that reports potential discrimination. As you know, housing discrimination is illegal, and that the Fair Housing Act protects people from being discriminated on the base of race, color, national origin, sex, religion, disability, and familial status. If you think you've experienced housing discrimination, you can call 732-246-4772. That's my report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
I'm gonna make mine very, very brief. This coming, on the June 14th, at 6:00 PM, there's gonna be a community forum behind the prosecutor's office in Edison at the Police Training Academy, and our Attorney General will be there for any questions that you may have. Come out June 14th, 6:00 PM. It's gonna be a community forum, and he's there to talk about anything that you wish to talk about, and that's our Attorney General for the State of New Jersey. Also, on Saturday, June 16th, at 12:00 PM, at the Riverside Park, the NAACP will be celebrating Juneteenth. And it's a celebration of life, of culture, of who we are. Juneteenth, if those of you who don't know, was a time when slavery was ousted, slavery was supposed to be over, but in Texas, the people were still kept as slaves, and they did not know that they were free to go out and celebrate. It took a year after slavery was over for the news to get to them. So, we celebrate Juneteenth. We're gonna have music, dancing, spoken words, drums. So, come on out and Saturday, celebrate with us, 12:00 PM at Riverside Park. And while we're in the celebratory mode, June, it happens to be Caribbean Heritage Month. I happen to hail from the country of Jamaica, and we were instrumental in 2006 to get Caribbean Heritage Month passed in the US by, under President George Bush. So, that's my report on very lighter note. I know we have heavier stuff to get into. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel? I'm sorry, we can't have any?
They moved that forum.
The 14th?
The Attorney General?
Yeah.
It's too crowded at the center, they moved it to Middlesex County College.
Is that West Hall at Middlesex County College?
Oh, okay, I didn't get the latest update. So, West Hall, Middlesex County College, same time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council President?
I'll be brief, Mayor. First, I just want to note that I spoke to Commander Bill Powers for my Veterans Moment, and there was a new federal regulation that all municipalities should fly the Kilden Action Flag. It's a red background with black writing on it. We promptly went out. DPW has erected the flag, it flies over Borough Hall. Trash isn't as attractive as some of the other subjects, but if we stop trash, I think I'd be the first to hear about that. Just want to remind everybody, bulk trash on the South Side is tomorrow. We had a very large turnout on the North Side in the Triangle last week, so if it's not taken away on Wednesday, we'll be getting to it. We're gonna put an extra crew on it and cover on Thursday and Friday as well. So, your bulk trash on South Side is this, is tomorrow, and we'll get to it. If we don't hit it on Wednesday, we'll get it Thursday or Friday. It's supposed to be good, clear weather for the rest of the week, so we'll get that done. Also, I'd like you to look online. You may have gotten an email from Sustainable Highland Park on their mailing list and on their website, the plastic bag recycling questionnaire to close out the grant, and also get a summary of how the program went from your perspective. It's out now. We mentioned it last time, it's being almost ready. It is out now, I'd ask you to take that. The more response that we get to it, the more validating it is for the process, and we'd appreciate that. That's my report.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I'm going to skip mine this evening in the interest of time, okay? Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
I have a report, Madam Mayor.
And I, because I want to get as many of you up here to talk as possible, I'm going to, it's been a very busy period, but I'll get my message out to you in other ways. Now, just so you know, there are two public discussion sessions on our agenda. The first one comes now, and I have to limit it statutorily to fifteen minutes. So, I'm going to ask, and we will be timing, each person who comes up to speak during this first round to limit themselves to three minutes. Please also, if you, if someone else has brought up a subject that you wanted to talk about, let's try not to duplicate discussions. And if you come up once, please let other people speak before you come to speak a second time. And so, I'm going to open up a public discussion now, and the, Joan is going to be telling me when three minutes are up, so just keep that in mind. So, please line up over here by the microphone, and when you come up to the microphone, please, as you probably heard before, you have to really speak into the microphone to be heard properly. Please speak into the microphone, state your name and address, and then feel free to talk. Okay, let's get rolling.
Okay, so, I'm Abby, I live on Harper Street. I'll try to be quick, because I know there's a, okay, I don't like to get super close, because, so, I'm Abby, I live at Harp, on Harper Street. I have a question about the budget, and I don't know if that also relates to other topics that people wanted to talk about. It's part of the consent agenda today, I think it's 157. It looks like you're changing the budget that was recently passed, and it looks like it's a pretty big change. I'm not sure where that deficit came from and why you're taking money from the other areas. If you could explain that briefly, I would appreciate that.
Sure, I'm gonna ask the Borough, I'm gonna ask the Borough Administrator to speak to that.
Yeah, this is what we were emailing about earlier this week. The answer to your question, there is a resolution on there, there is an, it just came down to an inadvertent error. We needed to, we basically have a salary line that was shorted in that budget, it was an error, and we had to find the money. That's what it comes down to, and those were the places we found the money that, they're outlined in the resolution.
Okay, so, where did the cuts come from, or where, where did the money get taken from?
Is the full resolution there? I'm gonna have to borrow it, because I can't do it off the top of my head.
Well, I don't wanna, I know a lot of people, so...
It's in the resolution, so if you want to take a look and then talk to me after, that's another.
Okay, so...
Yeah, no, I have it.
Okay. So, Abby, can, can we have somebody else step up while you look at that? Okay, next person, please, thank you, Abby. Can, can you please state your name and address?
My name is Ellen Witt, and I live at 20 South First Avenue. I'd like to speak tonight about the incident of March 15th, where a black teenager walking down the street on the North Side of the borough was assumed to be a criminal by the Highland Park Police. I want to give a few more details about this incident, which clearly showed racial bias and profiling. I was one of the residents who used the Open Public Records Act to obtain access to records, which demonstrate what actually happened. On March 15th, around 5:00 PM in broad daylight, a black teenager walked towards his home on Lincoln Avenue. Two doors down from his house, he stopped at the intersection to take a photograph for a school project. As there was no traffic, he stood in the middle of the street and used a disposable camera provided by his high school to take the photograph. He had no way of knowing that an undercover Highland Park detective, who happened to be in the area in an unmarked car, was watching him. The teenager then walked into the front door of his house two doors down. Meanwhile, the detective called for backup, assuming that the black teen must be a house burglar. On the audio to the dispatcher, the detective said, and I quote, "Give me patrol cars right away. I've got a blackmail." He took a picture of a corner house, running through the backyard of the house. Now, we know that the teen walked through the front door of his own home, as verified by his family, but perhaps the detective lost track of him for a moment, and since he disappeared so quickly, he assumed that the teenager, who he already assumed was a criminal, must have run to the back of the house. Why would he assume this? Because of bias. The detective simply could not conceive of the possibility that a black teenager would live in a house on Lincoln and walk through the front door. Perhaps he was blinded by his own bias. After the detective called the dispatcher, three Highland Park marked police vehicles arrived, along with two undercover detectives, who we are told were from the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. They proceeded to surround the home, going onto private property with no probable cause. Fortunately, the teen's mother was home and ended their pursuit. Now, you would think the incident would stop here, but no, instead, the detective returns to his car, calls into the dispatcher, says the incident is all clear, but then says, referring to the teenager, the black teenager he had just spoken with, quote, "He did admit to taking a picture on the corner," implying some type of guilt. "But she," referring to the mother, "didn't want to provide any more information since he was a juvenile," unquote. Therefore, the detective continues, in spite of being clearly proven wrong, to treat the teen as a potential criminal. In fact, the detective then asked the dispatcher on the audio record, quote, "If you can print that out for me, I can talk to Officer Corbello tomorrow." Officer Corbello is the police officer who's the liaison with the Highland Park High School. So, instead of dropping it, as he should have, the detective pursued this case by reporting it to the school police officer, something that could flag a teen in a school as a potential criminal. The fact of the matter is that this is the kind of thing that happens when walking while black, taking a photo while black, especially while on the North Side of this borough. And yet, we fail to do the one thing that I believe is needed to be done by the police and the council, which is fully recognize that these actions are a result of racial bias, and acknowledge to those affected that you see this and that it is a problem which will be addressed. But this is not what actually usually happens with these incidents, and it hasn't really quite happened here. The targets of racial profiling...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't want...
This is the final sentence.
Okay, because we're at three minutes.
The targets of racial profiling are never given the basic acknowledgement that what they experienced was real, and that it was indeed racial profiling. I think it's time that we fully recognize it for what it was by the council and the police. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monique Coleman, 407 Lincoln Avenue, and I'm actually here to read a statement on behalf of a fellow resident pertaining to the incident of racial profiling that Ellen Witt just spoke of pertaining to myself and my son. After receiving almost 200 signatures from members of the community in 24 hours on a letter highlighting demands that address racial profiling and racial bias in Highland Park, a small group of concerned community members felt it was important to continue to amplify the voices of our community by turning the original letter into a change.org petition with an aim of mobilizing additional supporters, spreading awareness, and ensuring this incident and our demands remain at the forefront of the community, Borough Council, and HPPD's agenda. This petition has now been signed by close to 400 community members, lawyers, researchers, and activists, all of whom are appealing to the Borough Council members as well as the HPPD to continue to listen to us and to please let us work with you in addressing, monitoring, and evaluating racial profiling and racial disparities in policing in Highland Park. For those of you in the community that may be hearing about the petition and the list of demands for the first time tonight, if you feel called to support this issue, this cause, thank you. Please know the petition is still open, and your signature is open to us and the continued work we have to do in our neighborhood. You can find the petition by going to Bias Free HP Facebook page and following the link. As stated in President Obama's Task Force on 21st Century Policing Implementation Guide, quote, "We all own the future of policing in the 21st century. Leadership needs to come from all three sectors in every jurisdiction, local government, law enforcement, and the community." It continues to say that three-legged stool needs to be evenly balanced, and the weight of creating healthy, vibrant, and safe communities equally shared. To the Borough Council members and members of the HPPD, please know that you have a dedicated group of concerned members of the community, and we remain ready to work with you on these issues. The council and the HPPD have already shown to be responsive to the community's concerns on these issues, and we want to keep these lines of communication open as these complex issues are addressed. Transparency and regular communication will be essential to this process in building trust and increasing collaboration. And that is the end of the statement by Sonia. I'm just gonna add a few words myself. On behalf of myself and many others of the dedicated community members that Sonia spoke of in the statement that I just read, we want to see the township's commitment to fair and impartial policing codified through a strong, clear, and comprehensive policy. The adoption of such policy is a reasonable short-term action step that will be an important part of the Borough and PD's work of ensuring public safety through maintaining the public's trust. There are other jurisdictions across the country that have already adopted bias-free policing policies at the state, city, or township level, including Vermont, Seattle, and Cleveland, just to name a few. Highland Park prides itself on its inclusivity and diversity in many areas, and our officials...
The governing body of the Borough of Highland Park does hereby approve the following as the Main Street Highland Park Budget for 2018. Income: Government grants $22,000. Special Assessment: $157,000. Sponsorships: $64,200. Total: $243,200. Expenses: Administration and General: $160,431.45. Expenses: $82,768.55. Total Expenses: $243,200. A hearing on the Main Street Highland Park budget will be held at Borough Hall on July 10th, 2018, at 7:00 o'clock, at which time and place objections to said budget and resolution for the year 2018 may be presented.
All right. May I have a motion to...
My name is Herb Grove.
No, 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 Herb, we're not in open public discussion. You have to wait a little bit. We're not in open public discussion, Herb. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the...
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, could you report on introduction of Salary Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final, on first reading by title?
An ordinance to provide for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer and employee of the Borough of Highland Park and the method of payment of such compensation has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to table the following three items from the consent agenda? Number 29, number 31, and number 32.
Also move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the following consent agenda items? Number 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 30, 33, 34, and 35.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
No to 26, yes to the rest.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
I am appointing the following Sylvia Hove and Paul Sayers to Sustainable Highland Park. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I look forward to having both of the new members of Sustainable Highland Park. Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
I just want to add Sylvia is a phenomenal volunteer with the food pantry, so she'll be an asset to Sustainable Highland Park. Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
And I know Paul to be a longtime environmentalist, so I'm glad he's not going anywhere on the team. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're open for the second portion of public discussion.
Good evening. My name is Herb Gross. I live at Adelaide Gardens. I have listened to all the speakers that we had here tonight, but not one of them even spoke about what I'm going to bring up. I want to speak about the woman in Highland Park. To all you young ladies sitting in this audience and all the young ladies at home watching television, I have the highest respect for women. Women have served in my outfit overseas, and they serve with honor. In Highland Park, we have many women that have served in various armed services, and they did a remarkable job. What I would like to speak about tonight is very important. It concerns the ambulance service that was taken away from us here in Highland Park. There are many women, and I have women in my family, so I know what I'm talking about. There are women in Highland Park that have gone into labor, that will go into labor, and need an ambulance. And if this ambulance is taken away from us, that woman, God forbid, I hope I'm wrong, might lose her baby. And I want everyone to listen to what I have to say. In the past couple of weeks now, I have been down in New Brunswick, and I have spoken with various drivers of the ambulance service, the medical field, and they are veterans like myself. And they told me that they will come into Highland Park in any emergency, but their priority is in New Brunswick and Edison, Milltown, East Brunswick. I've heard the same story. They will come into Highland Park. If any of these women that I'm speaking about ever loses their baby, Madam Mayor, I will file criminal charges against you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
You cannot take this, you cannot take this ambulance service away from Highland Park. In Highland Park, they have had ambulance service for over 70 years. The people, the residents in Highland Park, the senior citizens, their families, the veterans, their families, and every homeowner, their families, their children, their grandchildren, could go to sleep at night knowing that in case of emergency, the Highland Park Ambulance Service was there to help them.
Okay, thank you. It's three minutes. Mr. Gross, it's three minutes. I have to ask you to sit so other people can talk.
And again, I repeat, Mayor.
Okay.
I, this evening, I am calling for you and every council member here to rescind that order.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gross.
We need, we need the ambulance service right here in Highland Park.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Mr. Gross, you have to sit. Please state your name and address, Robin.
My name is Robin Lowenstein. My address is 116 South 4th Avenue, and I am the president of the Highland Park First Aid Squad. I will try to avoid discussing people's feelings about our personal care because that was covered, and what Robert Wood may or may not bill, because I'm not an expert in that area either. I would like to mention to Council President George that we not only take you to JFK if you want to see your cardiologist, but we don't charge by the mile, so you don't have to worry. And if you need to get transferred from Robert Wood to JFK or anything like that, it's very, very likely that we can make that transport for you, also at no cost if your hospital allows it. With regard to statistics, the statistics I'm holding in my hands say that our average response time in 2018 was 5.5 minutes. I am waiting for some documentation under the Open Records Act, so when I see exactly what statistics you guys are looking at, I can figure out why it differs. I also have statistics that say in 2013, 14, 15, 16, and 17, eighty-some-odd percent, a little bit different each year, but always in the eighties, which I think is what the Robert Wood representative also said, we have been under 10 minutes. So I'm not sure where the response time thing is coming from. I will tell you that response time is not as big an issue as everybody's making it out to be. Our first responders are men in blue. They carry defibrillators, they carry oxygen, they carry first aid kits, and they know how to use them. I can't remember a CPR call I've ever been on that the officers on the scene hadn't already initiated CPR. They are our first responders. They are there in 90 seconds typically, and they are amazing. So response time is not the biggest, biggest issue, but I will tell you that you made reference, as did the Robert Wood representative, to 10 minutes and 59 seconds. We were told at a meeting with Councilwoman Foster Dublin and Public Safety Director Risco that Robert Wood told them three minutes. I don't think that that's possible. I also don't know, we've heard, we've talked to a lot of staff at Robert Wood and found out some of the ways they get to quote those numbers and skew them a little bit. I don't know, the day after, we were told that we were basically out of business in the days, effective immediately, including weekends, and we've not had weekend issues in, I don't know, 20 years. Two Saturdays ago, when we were still online, my family answered seven calls that day alone, so I don't know why it's seven days a week, but be that as it may. What was he saying? The, the day after we were given that announcement, we heard an ambulance from Robert Wood calling and saying, "We are responding to such and such an address." It was around the corner from where eight squad members were readily available, and from the time they called in service to the time they arrived at that house, they said, "We're coming from Route 27 in South Brunswick." It took 12 minutes. I don't know when they were dispatched. I only know it took 12 minutes from when they called in service until they got there. So I think that some of the times and numbers being thrown around, if you want to look at the real-life answers, they're being grossly misrepresented. I will let you know that we have a petition that's only been a couple of days, and we already have about 500 signatures of residents of this town that strongly oppose this decision. I was shocked to hear that Robert Wood understands that if we inform them on a given day, given hours, whatever it is, that we have daytime crews available, that they would stand down and we could provide our residents with a free service. That was not made clear to us by Foster, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Foster Dublin and Public Safety Director Risco. We were told, done deal, 24/7, quote, "not up for discussion." So I guess I'd like to hear a little more about that at some point. And you mentioned, Mayor, about that last year, they increased our donation from the town by $5,000 from what it had been the year before and some years prior. Can I point out that it was 25 years? 25 years of $26,000.
And that's why I wanted to do that, Robin.
We appreciate it, but we didn't know that the outcome when we said, "No, we're not going to bill our residents," was that this would be, this would be. I think that our response time is really not the issue. We had a small stint about two months where we were having trouble getting daytime crews out for the reasons that you mentioned, people work, people, whatever. And when we met together, the answer we got, and everybody at the follow-up meeting agreed that the initial statement was Ms. Foster Dublin would find out what Robert Wood had to offer, we'd find out what we could do, and we'd reconvene and share information. A month later, when we reconvened, we were really excited because we had completely turned it around. We worked very, very hard. Our daytime calls were very close to 100%, well into the 90%, and the answer we got was, "We still already did it. Done deal. Not up for discussion." So I just wanted everybody to know that that was how it went down. Don't think it was necessarily appropriate. Don't think it's necessarily best for the town. And I hope that everybody continues to sign the petition and fight to keep us volunteer 24/7. I'll also mention that a friend of mine, I don't know about the Robert Wood billing, but I can speak a little bit to insurance, called our insurance company, and they said, "Of course, we cover the cost of an ambulance after you meet your $3,000 deductible."
Please state your name and address.
Hello, Marcia Goldberg. 451 South 5th Avenue here in Highland Park. I'm here to talk on a different subject. I'm here to talk about Buck Woods, and in case people aren't familiar with that term, that's a 4.1-acre wooded area running between South 5th and South 7th, and bordered on one end by Mansfield and where Graham Street would be on the other end. I'm here today because recently, the borough issued a permit to the developer who owns Buck Woods and has for many years Edgewood Properties, and this permit allows for the removal of 179 trees for the purposes of environmental testing. And this is in violation of the borough's own code for tree removal. Residents were only informed of the existence of the permit after it was issued, and this was just a few weeks ago. When we questioned people in the borough, we were told that tree removal could happen at any time now that the permit had been issued, once the site passed inspection. This is an issue that will affect us very directly. Our homes are on, just on the edge of the woods, and we were barely given any notice of this. These are, many of these are mature trees growing in a steeply-sloped wooded ravine, if you're not familiar with that area. Their removal will cause erosion of the slopes and release any contaminants that would be there to the environment, causing harm to the residents, the wildlife, and the watershed. And of course, once they are cut, that's irreversible. So why has this been, this permit been given? Removing trees for environmental testing doesn't make sense. We hired our own LSRP, Licensed Site Remediation Professional, to evaluate the situation. The developer had hired his own, and the report that the developer's engineers had submitted was reviewed by our LSRP. He did concur with the need for assessment if the land is to be developed, but he also questioned the method. Basically, his question and ours is this: Why go to the expense of removing trees to do testing when other methods, other methods are equally effective and much less costly? And they don't have the serious environmental consequences that this tree removal will have, causing harm to the residents of Highland Park and to their property. I guess that's, that's my question for everybody to consider. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm gonna, where'd she go? Marcia?
Oh, sorry.
It's all right. We have our borough attorney here, so he'll be able to address a couple of your concerns.
Mrs. Goldberg, thanks to your initiative today, a court order was issued preventing the removal of those trees you mentioned. And your attorney and this borough will be in court on Monday to try to make that order permanent. Up to this point in time, we have fought the battle of Buck Woods since 2009, and we were eventually ordered by the court to receive and process the permit, which we had to receive and process. And initially, there were only 72 trees down the middle taken out. Unfortunately, they found pollution, and they're continuing to study that. And we were bound by the LSRP reports which were submitted to us and reviewed by our engineering department. You have found another LSRP that disagrees, and thank God, we can go to court on Monday, and hopefully we'll block it.
Okay. Thank you.
Phyllis Goldstein, 30 South Adelaide. 30 South Adelaide, okay. I have, my remarks are basically to the board and the mayor. I have, I was a public employee, public service employee for over 30 years. One of the first things I learned upon signing the initial papers was, you can't do anything without giving due notice. Due notice is anywhere from 10 days, 10 business days to 21 business days. With the ambulance corps, everybody I know found out that there was a change in the procedure and a change in the thing retroactively. And I have never, I've never seen anything like that in my 30-some years of working. It's always done proactively, and you, your head is on the table if you didn't give adequate notice. Thank you.
Gattel Footerman, 115 South Adelaide Avenue. I have a question. This relationship with the RWJ, this contractual relationship, is this a financial relationship? Is the finance only borne by the people who use the ambulance service? And if the borough is going to be putting money into this, how much money is the contract for?
Okay, so Elsie, do you want to address this, since you've been working on it?
There will be no financial relationship with the borough. The borough is not putting any money towards the squad. It would just be a paid-for service as needed.
By insurance?
By your, by the insurance carriers.
Your insurance carrier will cover.
Yes.
Mayor, may I?
And most insurance carriers do cover.
I think, I think, I think one thing that we should point out was, is that the substance of the proposed change is really nothing more than police dispatch rerouting its calls to another ambulance provider. Just like how when, if you call, if you call dispatcher 911, you can request an ambulance provider, just like you might Hutsala or the Highland Park First Aid Squad. So that's, that's the substance of the change. It's not a, it's not contractual.
Sorry, I have to correct. Hutsala has their own private network. They're not in dispatch to the Highland Park.
Sorry. So, so, but, 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 but I think the point is that it's not, it's not, it's not-
Okay. Okay, let him-
But it's, my point is that it's not, it's not, it's not contractual. It's simply, it's simply a policy change that occurs at dispatch.
Oh, yeah. My husband can't walk up here. Can I just hand it to? Have to ask that of the other people.
Hi. Justin Futterman, 115 South Adelaide Avenue in Highland Park. I wanted a comment. When I came in, I saw several persons from the First Aid Squad and several people from our police force who would not have recognized me because I had clothes on. Normally, when they see me, I don't have clothes on and I need help. I have to say that the squad has been phenomenal help. Robert Wood has been a phenomenal help for, for me as well. It seems that, that it might pay, and now I'm putting on my hat as a former federal mediator. mediator, to have the parties involved in sitting down and talking and just seeing where we are, and if it turns out that, as Robert Wood implied, that if the local First Aid Squad is available during the day, so be it. I think it's, it's important to sit down and, and talk to each other.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gerald Pomer. I'm at 348 South Third Avenue. I'm here probably repetitiously to support the continuation of the First Aid Squad. And I've been in Highland Park for 50 years. I've known people on the First Aid Squad going back, actually, to Jim Polis and Holly Maitland, which are probably names you've never heard of while you've heard of Polis. But you haven't heard of them. But the important thing is that this has been a town resource. These are people who live in town, who know the town, and who on top of that are expert, incredibly concerned and empathetic, and very efficient. And I'm not convinced, from the presentation tonight, which is the only time I've heard them, I'm not convinced that the alternative know the town as well. I noticed, and it may be significant, only once did they use the name Highland Park. And other times, they may have well have been talking about Madison, Wisconsin, for all the knowledge that they seem to show about the town. This squad has been very fast, they know you, they know individuals. Justin Futterman has just given another example of that. And this is a peculiar town in many ways. It's got crowded streets, it's got heavy traffic, it's got a considerable number of people who will have difficulty paying the fees of the ambulances, and you have to take consideration of that. It seems to me, if it's money, there are ways to raise money, even some of them painful. If it's people, the First Aid Squad says they can now staff their service, and they certainly have a very good record of that. And I can tell you of one incident. Many of you knew my wife, and she had a kidney transplant back in 2010. Very difficult operation. She came home, she could literally not walk in or out of the house, and she could not even get into bed. The squad came and helped, got her out of the house, got her to a rehab, and did all that, I'm sure, within five minutes of my calling them for help. And there are other stories like that. So I, I think this is a great resource that ought to be preserved. And finally, it's an example of what's needed, probably in Highland Park generally. The thing that attracted me to stay in Highland Park all this time is that it's a true community, where a great deal of the work is done by volunteers, people not getting paid. Sometimes we have firemen like that, the First Aid Squad, the committees, the political parties, and that's a great characteristic of a small town, and it's a very important characteristic of the United States as a total political system. And I think you ought to try and preserve something like the First Aid Squad because it is so, not just Highland Park, it is so damn American, and we're in great danger of losing the character of America, as many of you know. Let's preserve what we can.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hi, I'm Justin Burton, 40 Cedar Ave. I'm just gonna hold this thing. So I have a few follow-up questions regarding the petition that was interrupted earlier. We had, on that petition, we have a few specific requests that we've made and that we would like to work with the council in, in seeing to fruition. I have some follow-up questions specifically regarding the training and the independent auditor piece, which a couple of our council people have already talked about this evening. So I just have follow-up questions based on those things. First, having to do with the hiring of the auditor, I'm wondering, was there a public bidding process before selecting Mr. Davis? And if so, who else bid, and why did we choose Mr. Davis? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Davis is gonna come in and he's gonna do this pro bono, it's free. There's no cost to what he's, to his services. He's not charging us to provide the service.
Okay.
And let me just add to that, Elsie, if that's okay. We've been working very closely with the NAACP, I don't know if Bruce is, oh yeah, there he is.
Shout out Morgan.
And he, his organization provided us with a list of possibilities, and that's part of the process we went through.
So I understand that-
I'm sorry, in addition, there was someone that came from the, I think she was a Rutgers professor, that suggested that we use Rutgers School of Law and work with that team that looks at this, and he's a part of that group.
Okay, thank you. I, I understand that bidding often means like picking the best price, but I think also it means vetting several different candidates to find out exactly who we're getting and who we want. So I commend you for consulting with the NAACP, and just want to make sure that we're looking through all the options that we've got. So there was one statement about Mr. Davis that said that whatever his report is, that's what it is, and I don't completely understand what that means. Does it mean we're binded somehow?
No, no, no. Mr. Davis said that when he looks at police department, because we were, we are not the only one that he's looked at, he's looked at police department across the US, him and his team, and he said, whatever the findings were, he would not be pressured into writing any report for anyone, no matter what the finding is, he's gonna provide the truth and nothing but the truth.
I understand. So you're not saying it's binding in some way, you're saying that he's unbiased?
No, yeah, he, he's gonna be totally unbiased with whatever the findings are, him and his team.
And then finally, less a question and more a request. As this audit process happens, in addition to looking at the data that we've collected on policing statistics, I'd request that we also have someone who interviews and maybe issues some surveys with the community, so we have a full sense of not only what the data shows, but also what the relationship is and how people-
Just to answer that again, he wanted us to be here tonight, but he had a previous commitment, and he would, he would have spoken to the level of the work, the body of the work that he is gonna perform, and that's also a component of that.
Okay, great.
I'm also going to ask Councilman Hirsch to address the issue of reaching out to the community with Elizabeth.
I think that might be slightly separate. The American Conference on Diversity, as I've, as I've mentioned in the past, will begin a series of public diversity and inclusion workshops, not necessarily related to the specific actions that we're looking at right now, but just a general ongoing program through the Human Relations Commission that does address, you know, bias and, and, you know, in society in general and in our community. But that, but that's kind of a separate track. I don't want to conflate the two.
But, but also a necessary one, which, again, I commend the council and the commission for taking up.
Thank you. Yeah, no, but that's just, we, I want to make clear that that's, that, that, we've, we've spoken a lot about that, kind of in relation, but, but it's, but it's not, it's not related to the list of actions that, that you've proposed.
Okay. I, so on the training piece, I had, I want to make sure I understand, so Councilman Hirsch, the thing you were just talking about, is that the American Conference for Diversity thing that you mentioned at the beginning?
It is.
Okay, are they also, are they also going to be involved in the police training? That's gonna be something entirely separate, is what you just said.
No, 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 they, they won't. They're, they're helping us identify exactly what we need to put, put in our request for proposal.
Okay. So on the petition that we circulated, and I know that you've all seen, I wanted to elaborate a couple of things involving the, the training process that, that we're asking the council and the police department to consider. And that's these following things, that it should be a job-embedded training that addresses implicit racial bias and de-escalation techniques, that it should be ongoing and should involve evaluation and reinforcement of the values, values of equitable policing, that the training starts now alongside the audit that Mr. Davis is doing and not waiting until the end of that, even if we have tweaks to add to the training at the, when we get the information back from that audit. And that's that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
My name is Jessica Hunston, and I'm at 304 Montgomery Street. And I just wanted to follow up on some of the other, one particular, one of the particular issues or concerns that we addressed in the petition. So I also want to commend the council for moving forward on, on two specific issues and concerns in the petition, I would say the training and, and the independent audit. But I do have some questions about the complaint process, because that was something also that we brought up in the petition. And so I just want to read a couple of things and then have a question about that. So I, I want to stress that we're, we're asking for, any complaint process needs to be tied to a transparent means to address the complaint independent of the police. Without a clear means to address the complaint, the Highland Park community and those specifically filing a complaint will only feel more frustration. Additionally, the mayor, council, and HPBD must commit to communicate the complaint process in ways that actually make it accessible to the community. For example, an online form on the website for both anonymous and self-identified complaints, and a location outside of the police department that is easily accessible day and evening to pick up forms. Finally, an announcement about the institution of the process could possibly sent out on NICSIL or other ways to the community. So several council meetings ago, the council mentioned that they would make changes to the online report a concern process to now include the option for reporting a policing concern, and, and address the fact that it was required to sign in, because I think you know that anytime you report a concern, you have to do a login on the, on the report a concern on the website. But I haven't seen those changes made. Maybe they were made today, but I, I looked yesterday, and I don't think they've been made. So I think it's reasonable to ask when we can expect the changes to the complaint process to address the concerns that I've just raised. When can we expect, so not only the change to the online, but some of the concerns that I've just raised.
So let me, let me ask the online question of the borough administrator. On, you know, the report-
I am familiar with-
Okay. So is that tied into having to redo the website, which is-
The truth is, I'm not quite sure if that's a function that is an option, the, the login that we can disable, or it's a function of the form, in which case, we can look into a different form that we can use to take these complaints that don't require a login. So I think there's a, there's a technical solution. I don't, we use a certain web provider, and I don't know if that's, the requirement to log in is our choice or the, the format. So I, I think there's a technical solution.
But you can look into that.
And there's two things. But I need to know the answer to the rest of her question, okay, what happens to the complaint?
Yes, that's right, exactly.
Yeah, so, you know.
And I think the other thing that I would say is, I, I do know that you can download the Internal Affairs Report on, on the police website that links, but it also is really, I mean, I have it here, and it asks for your date of birth and your social security number and things like that. So that doesn't give the appearance that someone could, could be, could fill it out anonymously. So I think those are some, some pieces that really need to be addressed.
So, so will you also, you know, that's something I can ask you guys to, to look into in terms of the online reporting, do we have to have? Do you want to answer now, or you want to look into it?
As the Internal Affairs Commander for Highland Park, I will tell you is that we will always accept any complaint, whether it be through phone, anonymous, even just a note dropped in a mailbox somewhere, somebody can mail it in, and everything will be investigated through Internal Affairs, and that's as per the Attorney General's guidelines and directives.
Okay.
There are, there is a process about, we're not allowed to share some of that information as per the law.
Right.
And I believe some of that is what she's asking for that. I don't know about the borough website, the police department has no control over that of how things are submitted or how people sign in, but we can put it out there though, too, and it's well-known, it's on the Attorney General's guidelines site. You wanna, you could just write a note anonymously and mail it to us, and we will investigate, and we have to by law follow up on it, we cannot just ignore it.
And I think we've talked about those pieces before, but I think I've raised some things that are, that we haven't addressed, which is that it needs to be outside of the police department, we need to have a, I mentioned that, as well as the fact that we need to, we need to make sure that everyone in our community is aware of the process, too. And I, I don't think that's happened, yes.
So I, I think what we have to do is, she's telling me it's three minutes, but I'm way over, she said.
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay. But Jessica, we can talk offline a little bit about some of what you said.
Hello, everybody. I'm Rob Holtzoffel from 431 South Seventh Avenue.
You can raise it or take it off if you want.
I'm here to talk about the Buckswoods. I wanted to convey the strong concerns from the members of my-
Telephone.
The strong concern of my neighbors about the tree cutting and how that erosion might expose some of our neighbors to some of the contaminants that have been discovered on the site. I reached out to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection today, they instituted a case number, and they told me that within 48 hours, they're going to send one of their people to meet me to walk through the woods. I understand that this case that you have before you, that you're currently litigating, is Jack Morris saying that we polluted the site as township? That's not the case. People who've been in Highland Park a long time will tell you that that is from the New Jersey Department of Transportation dumping their tailings in that site. I don't care much for Jack Morris, I've seen his work, you know, I've grown, I've been, I'm a native son of Middlesex County, I've been here my entire life. And I want to, you know, ask you to stand up to him.
So we've been, we've been doing that since the 1990s?
I know, and I commend you for your work. I mean, he's been trying to do this for a long time. You know, and I, I appreciate everybody's work. I mean, we fought this fight together for a long time. But as a council, I think we need to have a public meeting, because there's a lot of misunderstanding about what's been going on. I don't think as a local government, we've done a good job of communicating the facts to the residents of the town, and-
You're talking about Buckwoods?
Buckwoods, yeah. And if it means like bringing, you know, our attorney in to answer questions for an hour, I think it would be worthwhile. So I think we need to-
You're right. The last, the last meeting we had on this was at the end of 2016.
In 2016, you know, it was poorly, it was poorly noticed that 300 people were there, you know, so I think it's time again.
Okay, thank you.
My name is David Lowenstein. I live at 116 South Fourth Avenue, and I am proud to say that I've been a member of the First Aid Squad for, at the end of this year, it'll be the beginning of my 35th year as a volunteer. Just to start personally, and then I'll go on. In the last week, I have to tell you, I feel like my heart has been ripped out. This has been my legacy for my life to take care of the town of Highland Park and to be that person and that organization. I guess the first question that we've all been here now to the mayor and council, is this a done deal? Are our 500 signatures, or is everything that's been said tonight gonna be taken into consideration at all? Or did we just talk for the heck of it, nothing's gonna happen anyway?
So I think we said earlier that we don't have any signed agreements with RWJ for coming in, in the daytime?
So why were we shut out since Thursday already?
My understanding is that was what was requested, but I wasn't at-
By who?
Elsie, go ahead.
At the meeting that we had on Thursday with you, we shared with you, and in that meeting, Robin specifically said, "Do it now."
No, not true, not true at all. We have been here, we are willing to.
And-
And on top of that, was this ever thought through? You had a fire last night. Nobody knew to call Robert Wood.
David, let me, let me tell you, from, from my perspective, we were talking about this on council, it was communicated to you, we're a governing body, right?
Excuse me, wait, it was communicated to us when? The only notification we had is we had one meeting-
No, I understand that you were told that Elsie was talking to various ambulance services.
That is true, and we agreed, and we agreed to come back to a meeting. When we did, we were so proud to say we fixed our problem, and she looked at us and she said, "Well, too bad, because starting tomorrow, this is what happens."
David, what we were planning on, the procedure that we were thinking about, was, we got a recommendation from RWJ. Elsie and the chief sat down with you, there was a, you know, a big eruption, I understand, I wasn't there. But without that happening, what we were planning on doing was discussing this further at the next council meeting, having a discussion about it with the council members. But that all had to get thrown to the wayside when my understanding is, and I hate, you know, the he said, she said stuff, but my understanding is that the, they, that we were told, or the people from- told, or the people from the borough who were there, were told, "Just start it now."
If that were true, would we have been there last night at that fire? We went there because we're concerned about our town, and that's why we were there. And I'm sorry, it's just, it's incorrect.
David, as I said to you in the very beginning, you guys have been wonderful, not only-
Have been, is past tense.
Okay.
Mayor, can I say something? Because I was the one who was in the meeting. I had the meeting over a month ago, and I outlined all the concerns that we heard.
Right, and we addressed every one of them correctly.
And I said to you, "Let me get back to you in a month. I'm going to do research. Let me get back to you within a month." We got back to you within a month, and we said that Robert Wood Johnson have been providing the service, and you said, your team said to me that you have been for the past two weeks that the numbers have-
Four weeks, since that meeting.
Have improved.
Four weeks since that meeting.
And you have a lot of help now, and I said, "What's going to happen in September when that help that you have, the increase in helping?" One of you said, "Can't predict the future, we'll see what happens in September."
That's correct, but for thirty-five years, we've maintained it. Seventy years we've maintained, thirty-five since I've been there. This is just crazy. This is-
And what-
And I have another question.
At the same, and I was trying to speak, and this was what was going on, the over-talking and no one was listening.
Because again, you admitted that you said to us you were going to discuss it. Instead of discussing, you came back and you said, "This is now the way it's going to be." Right, you said, "It's not negotiable."
We said seven days a week. We said seven days a week. We said, "You know how we-"
Why seventy? I can't tell you the last time we missed a weekend.
Okay, listen, listen.
Councilwoman Foster, double, can you go over some of the concerns that you guys both agree?
We will, what I would like to see happen after this meeting, I would like to sit down with Elsie, the chief, and you and Robin, and talk about this.
And Josh, who's the highest ranking line officer.
Wait, tonight?
No.
Oh, God, no.
We have more, we have to go back in there and finish our meeting.
Mayor, can I ask you then, as of tomorrow, are we being dispatched again twenty-four seven, since we're going to have to discuss this? And let's see what happens?
Right now, the process that is in place is our WJ gets called in the daytime, and you guys get called in the evening.
So I'm asking the question, why are we discussing it? The process is already there. Go back to the way the process was.
We had to, we did that at the last minute when we were told, "Go ahead and do it now."
Okay, but that's not true, that's not even what was said.
Okay, I wasn't-
That's number two, okay, I just want to, I'm going to go on.
Mayor, with all due respect, we're not going to get anywhere because it's going to come and say-
Okay, I'm going to go on.
Because when we were in the meeting last week, it got blown out of proportion, and no one would listen on your side. I did not laugh because-
Okay, David, David-
I would like to-
As you call me the ice queen.
David and Robin.
We're not going to go there. I'll end it, I'll end it here.
As somebody in that meeting, I just want to point out that it was one of the most unprofessional meetings that I've ever been in. And so if this is how you're going to conduct yourselves in public in front of the community, I just want to point out that that needs to change. That cannot happen. Whether you're coming, whether you're arriving at my house or anybody's house, there is nothing about this policy decision that indicates that we are dissatisfied with the first aid squad or that anybody is ungrateful for the service that you've provided for fifty years. But this is the behavior that we cannot tolerate as a governing body. You are not a municipal agency, and we cannot, we have a lot of business to do.
So can I ask you a question? How many complaints have you received from any community member here?
Have I received personally?
Yes. Anybody. Elsie will tell you no, the chief will tell you no, we asked them, not one complaint. Okay, boy, I have another question, I just want to keep going, I'll move on with this.
Wait, wait, David, first of all, you're way over the three minutes that everybody's getting. No, 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 no. And I have the utmost respect for everything that you guys have done. I want to continue this conversation. I don't think it's productive to do it in this manner.
All right, I'm going to another point. I'm ready to go to a different point now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I would also like to know if this was very well thought through, and you're no longer funding us. Are you aware that we are the ones who supply the police department with oxygen, nasal cannulas, non-rebreathers, and boot bags? Where do you expect the police to go now to get them? What is in place right now for them to take care of that, starting tonight or tomorrow?
Well, like I said, let's, let's all sit down togeth-, David, let's all sit down together and talk about this calmly and professionally.
That's fine. As of tomorrow, start dispatching us twenty-four seven, we'd be very happy to be as calm as can be. Go back to the way it was.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Al Stokes. I live at two forty-two South Sixth, right across. I was not going to speak, but I heard that one of the councilmen speak about, stepped on my scene, and it reminded me, my first job I landed was with New Brunswick Scientific, and I came to live in Highland Park in nineteen sixty-eight. So I'm calculating, I've been here related to Highland Park for fifty years. Time flies. Now, it's, time is very important for me, and I think it's much more important for you. And I am suggesting that when you put a, like a time, you say, "Meeting starts at seven P.M. ," I always love a meeting to have a beginning and an end. So you should, in my opinion, have, the meeting will be between seven and nine P.M. or something, so we can allocate our time. And you can go further, but at least it gives you a target when to end the meeting, okay? And I think it'll benefit you, too.
Yeah, but believe me.
Yeah, okay. So anytime anyone has a meeting, it should always have a beginning and an ending, so that you can allocate the time.
That's, that's a good suggestion. I'll discuss it with our attorney to see if we can legally do that.
And my last point, I did not want to, I didn't come here for the controversy about the ambulances.
Okay.
But I can tell you from a logistic point of view, Robert Wood Johnson cannot, it's a no-brainer, give a time response faster than Highland Park. It's got to do with distance, okay? And you don't have to make a study on that.
Right.
It's, you know, straightforward. But that's all the two cents I have to give. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't know I would be coming to Highland Park and dying in Highland Park. And quickly, I wanted to mention one thing, that please be aware, I'm not, I'm not in the medical field, but I know one thing, whenever you have a heart attack or a stroke, every second counts.
Correct.
Either are you going to die, or your brain is going to be.
Right, that's exactly right.
So just from that point of view, I would veto everything else. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you. Hey, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Amiri. I live at four oh seven Lincoln Avenue. So earlier, my mother spoke, and several people spoke about a situation-
Amiri, speaking to the phone, into the microphone.
So earlier, my mother spoke, and several other people in the community spoke about a situation involving racial profiling. That was me, after I was coming back from the high school. I prepared a statement for the council meeting directly after, but I wasn't able to make it, so I just wanted to read the statement now, considering that people were talking about it. So first of all, I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks for all the support from my friends, my family, and my neighbors throughout these last few days. I'm happy that people are offering their support to me and my family, but I'm primarily grateful to see that so many people are using this experience to educate themselves on the realities of racism in this society, and specifically the prevalence of racial profiling in this town. It is cumbersome that it requires a traumatic event to initiate education, but I'm glad nevertheless that the learning is under the way. Everyone benefits. This experience, the experience I had, racial profiling, is something that almost fundament, that is almost fundamental to the identity of being black in America, and certainly fundamental to being a black person in this country. It's ironic that I turned eighteen, when I was writing this, I turned eighteen four days, four days ago. This experience was a jarring introduction to the unfortunate realities of my black adulthood, specifically growing up in this town. I think it was most jarring for me because I've always seen other people's viral images, stories, videos, and experiences with racism. So the fact that I was a direct victim of overt racism was bizarre and unsettling. I guess I'll have to get used to that feeling, though. I feel like the most important aspect of this experience, from my perspective at least, is the fact that this situation is not just my own. Racial profiling is a problem in Highland Park, and in New Jersey, and in America, not because of this one incident, but because there have been so many situations like mine throughout the years. I know so many kids at Highland Park High School, some of my closest friends and students that have graduated within recent years, who can vividly share their own racist encounters with the police here in Highland Park, but also in the Middlesex County area in Jersey and in America at large. And so I know that being a victim of police, racist policing is a traumatic experience, and it can also be seriously debilitating. So as glad as I am that people are here supporting my experience, by no means is my situation an aberration. This is not the first time that we have seen this issue play out in our community, nor will it be the last. Let us use this current energy to interrogate the long lineage of police racism in our community, so we can remember that the situation isn't the only example of this longstanding institutional problem. Thank you for your help.
Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Sam, and I live at eight oh one B Donaldson Street. I just wanted to say, separate from the issues of response time and care and stuff like that, the effect of taking away daytime hours for the squad is that cadets now suffer because the cadets can only respond during the daytimes because we don't want them riding during the nights because they're students, and we want them to focus on school. And personally, I was a cadet, that's how I first joined the squad. And by taking away the daytime hours, they can't ride anymore, and they can't go on calls and get that experience. When I was in high school, after school, I'd go to the squad, and I'd hang out and wait for calls, and that's how I got a lot of my experience and how I learned a lot. And by taking that away, we have a bunch of cadets on the squad right now that are dedicated and want to go on calls, but now because the daytime hours are taken away, they don't have that opportunity anymore. And so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Melanie McDermott. I live at three thirty South Third Avenue here in town, and I just wanted briefly also to speak to the Buckwoods issue, and I'm very heartened by the developments of the day. I'm heartened by the words from our attorney and the strong action of my neighbors to stand up for what makes Highland Park beautiful and valuable to us, which is our green ecology and the people who care about it. And I just wanted to also echo the call for transparency and perhaps a future public meeting where the attorney, perhaps the LSRP, council members, Shatree Committee people can come together and discuss a way forward. Highland Park is not against development, and we can accommodate density because we're a walking town, but not at the expense of environmental degradation that can't be sustained. So I know it's a very tricky, vexed history, and we're not dealing with, we're dealing with an aggressive developer, but I think that if we stick together and keep each other informed, the outcome will be best for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Prince. I live at seven oh three South Fifth Avenue. And I find myself here to raise two issues, two of the hotbed issues, because I'm personally affected by both. The first has to do with the first aid squad, and that is, my mother fell, and the first responders were the police, and immediately thereafter was the Highland Park First Aid Squad, who treated her with enormous respect and enormous consideration. And I'm very grateful to the squad for all that it does. However, I think there's a simple solution that we might consider. Robert Wood would seem to have the opportunity to make some income from being an exclusive, and there seems to be some question as to how rapidly they actually do respond. So perhaps the solution might be that Robert would be charged a hundred dollars a minute for every minute they arrive after the first five. That money would go to, initially, to reimburse the people who will have to now pay out of their pockets, and any subsequent income would then go to the town. Now, I know we're all saying they'll have, they'll never do that, and there may very well be a very good reason why they don't think that's a really good solution for them. The position that seems to be taken is, they are looking for an income opportunity without any risk to themselves financially or any other way. So that's one issue. The second issue is the issue of the Buckwoods. And Madam Mayor, you were kind enough to respond to me, to a letter that I wrote to you, and say that you would present my concerns to the borough attorney. Unfortunately, I haven't heard back from either one, and I'm, I, like everyone else, is grateful for the progress that's being made. However, what is increasingly clear is that progress will occur only to the degree that individual citizens of this town are prepared not only to stand up personally and from a volunteer perspective, but financially as well. That's wrong. This town cannot be so financially adverse to spending money for the benefit of its citizens that it ignores the needs and rights of those citizens. It seems to me that we need to proceed in a way in which we make sure that all of our citizens are best protected, and not be told, as I remember hearing at a meeting, "Well, to appeal will cost twenty-five thousand dollars, and we certainly wouldn't want to spend that kind of money."
So Ed, let me, let me just stop you for a second. First of all, I hope your mom's doing okay. I know I spoke with your sister, so, you know, if there's anything you need, let me know. Secondly, I'm going to ask the attorney to speak to this, but we never said we don't want to spend money in litigating these accounts. We have, because of all the litigations that are going on, there are things that we were not able to say or do, and Borough Attorney, I don't know if you can address that.
And we've spent considerable amounts of money.
Yeah, it's, it's been a lot.
Is not, is not, is not money-averse.
If I may add into Councilman Hirsch, we spent well over half a million dollars to lose four lawsuits to protect the citizens of this town. And I'll tell you, it didn't start in two thousand nine, like a witness said, because sitting right here as the municipal prosecutor for eight years, I was fining Buckwoods for cutting the first tree, and we managed to stop him until two thousand nine, and then managed to stop him. So we've been working on it. But saying, "To protect the citizens," we've done that. We spent over half a million dollars in four losing lawsuits. Four of them.
Money we could use to address our capital needs, money we could have used to address to buy new trucks, money that we could use to do a lot of things that have been spent against this developer who is redeveloping the Hard Rock Casino in Atlantic City. This is the person that, with our twelve million dollar municipal budget, we're up against. Four acres.
Borough Attorney, can you add to this in terms of what we were able and not able to do or say?
Well, I can echo what the council president said. I mean, we have been in court on Buckwoods since two thousand and nine, and before that, and I wasn't here before that, but I understand our planning board denied an application to develop and take the trees down on that property. We then negotiated for about five years on various scenarios to try to avoid taking down those trees, and that didn't pan out. And then finally, the final litigation began, and the town basically ran out of reasons why it had denied the environmental testing tree removal permit. And we were told by the court to issue the permit with conditions. We worked out about five pages worth of conditions which tracked our tree removal ordinance, and we did the best we could to prevent them from taking down trees. Now we have a reprieve, thanks to the efforts made by the citizens, and hopefully we can go into court Monday and make that stick. But believe me, this town has spent a ton of money, not only just on me, but other litigators involved, over the past almost ten years.
I just want to, I don't, I don't question that, and I'll have to, I'll stop. My understanding was, and perhaps I was misinformed or I misunderstood, that when the two court cases were merged together, to separate them would be a fairly expensive proposition as an appeal, and the town was not prepared to invest in that. Was I, did I misunderstand that?
Well, I don't recollect we actually talked about, there are three cases, because the third case involves JSM, the developer suing the borough right now for allegedly polluting Buckwoods. We, of course, are resisting that, but that's the third case. The second case was the affordable, affordable housing case, which they are a part of. And the first case was, "We're not going to give you a permit to knock down the trees." So those three cases were consolidated by Judge Natali at one point in time, and the judge has discretion to do- do that. It would have been a frivolous appeal to try to break those apart. And that's when he instructed us to sit down, since we hadn't issued that permit since '09, to figure out a way to issue it, because there were no reasons not to. And that's when we sat down, followed that directive, and eventually, that case was dismissed.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Eric Palofsky, 119 North Fifth Avenue. I was not intending to speak tonight, and I, I understand the difficult situation the committee has. Regarding the rescue squad, I have two questions. First off, you brought up a point about volunteerism in Highland Park. It's, it's down. Seventeen years ago, my daughter Gabriella had a food allergy, an anaphylactic shock, when she was 16 months old. The rescue squad was there with four minutes. Fast forward 17 years. Three months ago, she reached out to the rescue squad, completed all of her requirements for first aid, and became a cadet. She's now riding and supporting the ambulance, and now pursuing a medical degree. That is her intent, as she's a junior in high school. I want to thank the Lowenstein's and the rescue squad for every day, everything they are doing to provide a platform to educate and support the youth. Now, I understand the situation for outsourcing. I believe that it's a difficult situation. I understand the financial implications. I think if you could actually bring the facts of what the costs are to the town, there probably could be a solution to help us subsidize the cost for the rescue squad. If it is data-related, I think some of the data that you're working off of is not actual. The Lowenstein's, the Highland Park Rescue Squad's data is going off of 82% of the calls off of 5.5-minute average. When you look at Robert Wood Johnson's statistics, they're saying 87% statistic response to a 10.59 statistic. They're going off the wrong data. They're not equal playing forms, platforms. So you need to look at that data very clearly. The third part is, is as you look to outsource it, are, is the township receiving payment from?
It's already outsourced. I want to make that clear. This is not a municipal agency. The services are, are provided independently.
As you work, look to work with Robert Wood Johnson, is the district receiving payment from them per call?
No.
No.
There is no compensation to the district.
No.
And my last point, I can't remember. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? Please state your name and address. You should take it out. Just take it out.
Hi, Martin Clea, 613 Banner Street. I'm a longtime resident. Moved here in '69. Been here and out, but mostly here. Just another, I just want to speak briefly about the first aid squad. They've come to my house, and they've come to my parents' house many times. Never questioned, you know, if they came twice within a short period of time for the same thing. Never an issue with my mother. They took her to the hospital when she was in a lot of pain, and everything's been fine. It seems like you're trying to fix something that's not broken. Okay? Current system's been working. It's, it's like a model for other cities to emulate. It's been, like our volunteer fire department, our volunteer first aid squad, it's, it's, I mean, you're, you're trying to replace something. I've seen this outsourcing go on in other businesses, and it, it basically, it ends up costing more, and you end up getting less service. So...
Let me, let me just address a couple of the things you said, and then you can finish, but I don't want to forget. So first of all, as, as Councilman Hirsch said, this is not outsourcing. This is not what, you know, it's, because we're already outsourcing, basically, to the first aid squad. They're not part of the municipal government.
They're volunteers.
They're volunteers to a separate organization, not to the municipal government.
But you're not paying them. You'd have to pay them.
Yeah, 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 but I, you know, outsourcing is, you know, as if we were, for the first time, going outside, okay? In other words, we have a paid police department. If I wanted to do away, if we wanted to do away with all of them and outsource, that would be outsourcing, okay? So I just want to clarify that. The second thing is, this came to, what came to our attention, and, and I know, Robin, you said you had numbers that were different from, you know, the numbers we have from the dispatch and, and that we got from, that we keep here at the borough. And that's why I want, I think we all need to sit down and talk about the numbers. We have the numbers. You have all of this. But the numbers that we have been seeing for daytime pickups, or calls, over the last year, last, since January in particular, I didn't look at all of the back months, were, I did look at them, but I didn't analyze them, were very concerning to me. These guys have done a phenomenal job, and do a phenomenal, phenomenal job, but there have been times where it's almost 20 minutes before a call can be answered, particularly when we have, when they, they don't have enough people to answer a call. Because I believe the process, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lieutenant, but my understanding is, when a call comes in, we have to give the first aid squad 11 minutes.
No, four minutes, not 40 minutes.
That's not the procedure that we have. And when you tell a lot, it's about 11 minutes before we go to mutual aid.
Yeah, so that's 11 minutes that already we've lost. So, so, you know, that's what started to concern me. There were more and more of these cases coming up. So...
But did you hear anybody complain about it, to you?
Are we going to wait till somebody's dead, because nobody shows up?
No, not dead.
Is that the idea? I don't, I don't get that. You know, I, our number one job is protection of our residents, right? And the last thing I ever, ever want to see is somebody dying, because we couldn't get there quickly enough, okay? Now, that's not to say that they are always much later. I, that's why I want to, when you're saying you have certain numbers, I think it's important for us to sit down together and talk about it.
And there's also the cost, right? Those are the two issues from somebody that needs an ambulance, right?
Well, they, they said this before, that, you know, if you, they would charge your insurance, and if you're, if you can't pay the, the copay, they're not going to go after you.
It's important to work out a deal.
Well, we, we, you know, we're going to see them Monday night. We can ask that question specifically all over again, with everybody there. So, so what we are hearing from them is, they will not charge our residents that can't afford to pay.
I'm a little suspicious of that, because I have medical bills, and, you know, when they say first, we're going to come after you, go for your insurance, and then afterwards, you have to work out a deal with them, you know? We have something, we have a free service now that's working, and it seems to me that maybe there are meet needs, I mean, I was on this, well, anyway, it seems like, maybe there needs to be some more, um, different views on the committee, okay? Because it doesn't seem like it's, I mean, you, you should definitely have a meeting and talk about it, but...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, we're, we're looking at the numbers, and we're, we're looking at response times and volunteerism. That's what we've been looking at.
Okay. Well, I, when is the next meeting on this?
Monday night.
Monday at 7:00 PM.
Monday at 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
In here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rosalynn Bell, 130 Valentine Street. I just want to make a very short comment in, in support of the first aid squad. The first aid squad is one of the things that knits together this community. And there's no way that an outside service would have done what they did last night at 30 South Adelaide. And we, we need to keep them in business. They're a part of the, of what makes this, this town connected and strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before you speak again, is there anyone else who has not spoken for the first time that wants to talk?
Hi, Michelle May. I'm on South Adelaide. I wasn't going to speak either, but I've had two very catastrophic accidents in town where I've needed the rescue squad, and I have to tell you, their response time was amazing. The last time I broke my leg, I think if, if it was 10, 15 minutes, I could have lost my leg. They were there in less than five minutes. And they're like family to me now. Those who responded are family. They always see me in town. They ask me how I'm doing. I have one particular squad member who's out in the hallway, who I call my hero, because when I fell and fractured my skull, he fought for me at the hospital. And I don't know if anybody else would have ever done that for me. So I just want to say that I appreciate them, and I hope that you guys reconsider keeping them on, because I think they're, they're very important to this town. As you can see, everybody's come out to, to be in support of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, now you can. And this will be the last, the last person.
I feel great. I'm the last person. Thank you very much. I think, looking at the timing and all this, it seems to me, you're trying to solve a problem with a hammer, and it's a simple solution. You have the first aid squad, which is volunteers. Many times, they have a lot of volunteers. Sometimes, they have no volunteers. That's the nature of the beast. So what ought to be the procedure is very simply this. The first aid squad knows the manning, and if they have no people there, the switch is flipped, and the call goes, you know, you know, you make the procedure, that right away, it goes to Robert Wood Johnson. So, let's take a scenario. The reason you have been having a long time for the squad is because sometimes, there are not people there. So what do you do? At that time, you click in Robert Wood Johnson. So 90% of the time, the Highland Park squad will take care of it, and 10%, when they don't have manpower, Robert Wood Johnson kicks in. So that should be the solution, not to get rid of the, what do you have, service, if your concern is the timing, how much time is taken. But that's the minor suggestion that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We don't have any executive session this afternoon, right? No more exec session?
No.
Okay.
I can have one more there.
One more?
So, sorry, my name's Abby. I live on Harper Street. I know this is not going to be a popular comment, but I didn't really come in with any opinion. I'm relatively new still to the town. I don't know people. I'm sorry. Okay. I don't know people on the squad, although it seems great, and these stories are very touching. But as someone who has a new baby, and, you know, will one day, hopefully not, but possibly need services, for me, it's, these stories are amazing, but the time that they take to get to my house is the most important. And as the mayor said, looking at the statistics, I believe that's the most important thing. And, you know, in terms of health insurance and cost, I understand that that is very difficult for people, but the bottom line, in my opinion, should be who can get to the house faster. And if these volunteers, you know, can't do it, I understand that that's very upsetting. But I personally just wanted to express the other side. I want whoever can get to my house faster statistically. I know that these are stories that are being shared, but there are, I'm sure, people who have had Robert Wood Johnson come and be very helpful and successful. I've had, I mean, that's where I gave birth to my daughter. They are, you know, they are very skilled as well. So I think it should really come down to the numbers and look at them. You know, I know there was a disagreement, so if you can look at those accurately, I think that's really the bottom line.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn to conference?
So moved.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.